Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, April 26, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, to which it stands, one nation, under God, in its moral, liberty, and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the April 12, 2022 minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
One second.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
I'm Ryan Mopless.
Yes.
Berna Brata?
Yes.
Mott?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Dr. Goggin.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. I'm going to start my report with a personnel update, and I would ask that we have a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Jack Kelly. Jack worked for the district since 1998 as a mail courier, and he also delivered lunches to the parochial schools. Anyone who ever came in contact with Jack knew that he had a very eternal smile, that it was infectious. Our deepest sympathies go out to his wife Rita and his daughter Kathy. I'd like to also let you know that we have received some resignations. Kelly Nedlaskey, our Special Education Administrative Assistant in the Special Education Office, has resigned effective April 29. We are in the process of hiring her replacement very quickly. And as of today, I was notified that Ms. Lorinda Allen, our Park Avenue Elementary Assistant Principal, will be resigning at year end effective June 30. We wish both of them well on their new journeys. Next in my Superintendent's Report, I would like to give you an update on the Bartlett High School Principal Search. As you know, NESDEC is conducting the search, and we had 14 applicants for the Bartlett High School Principal Search. The Preliminary Screening Committee has selected six candidates to interview. At this time, those names are confidential, and the interviews are being held this week. And from there, the Preliminary Screening Committee will be meeting and then deciding on finalist candidates that they will be sending to me to interview. And Mr. Donald Bodett, who is the NESDEC consultant, is obtaining an agreement in principle with any of the finalists prior to them scheduling any interviews with me or any site visits here, that if they were offered the position, that they would take it. Once the finalists have been determined, I will be sending out a press release with their names and bios. It is anticipated that the finalists will be spending the anticipated dates of May 9, May 10, and May 11 at Bartlett, interviewing with the superintendent, the superintendent's cabinet, meeting the staff and the students. And on those days, there will be a forum for parents, community members, to come and meet the finalists. And I hope to have an announcement by the end of May on the selection of the new high school principal. Any questions on that? I'm pleased to let you know that we have received the Project Lead the Way grant. It's a $14,000 grant. These funds will be used to help train Bartlett's staff with the new biomedical Project Lead the Way courses that are being offered in the healthcare and social assistance pathways. I want to also let you know that we did go out for quote, for maintaining an innovative pathways project manager. Abigail Callahan, who was our Innovative Pathways Project Manager, was awarded that next contract starting now until the end of June. Her work will not exceed $15,000, and it will be funded through ESER. It is with Abigail Callahan's assistance that we obtained the Project Lead the Way grant. We are waiting to hear about the Capital Skills Grant, which is a much larger grant to help us fund some of these innovative pathways, materials, and trainings. So we're pleased that she will be with us. I do want to let you know that the Learning Environment Survey, that was a great suggestion, Chair Siddiqui, about sending it home through ClassDojo. We did get more responses that way, as opposed to just sending it out with my email. And there is a brief summary on the results. As you can see in your school committee response, there were 99 responses from Park Avenue. Out of that, 10 parents said they were not satisfied. Some of their concerns were around communication, seeking more positive behavioral PBIS, and more hands-on assistance for students. Webster Middle School, 84 responses, 23 were not satisfied. Forty-three of those people were in favor of mesh backpacks. That was one of our questions. And their concerns were around discipline, bullying, safety, and really focusing on those who are misbehaving and not punishing the group. And at Bartlett High School, there were 29 responses, 10 were not satisfied, 11 were in favor of the mesh backpacks, and concerns were about getting more support for students with disabilities, more assistance from teachers, and more PBIS and recognition for students doing the right things, and putting lockers back into use, along with discipline and safety. We are addressing learning environments in many fashions. One, we're trying to be transparent about how people feel about our schools. Two, we are going to be focusing on retraining administrators and staff about the implementation of PBIS. It is not simply an extrinsic reward system. It's more about code of conduct and setting clear expectations for how to behave in a school so that every student has access to learning in a safe environment. So tomorrow, we have our district leadership team meeting here, and we have some consultants through the May Institute coming with us. And I know we've talked to you about the ups and downs that we've had with collecting data, and everyone's collecting it a little differently. And at one point, Park Ave had SWISS, and then we moved to Power School, and then there were some bumps and bruises with the Power School collection, and then every school sort of collected their data differently. So we're really wanting to go back to SWISS data, to get that data collection so that we can report out on it, use it to make decisions. And I see that as something that's right here. But the PBIS and training is all the way back here. So we're kind of taking a big pause to go back. I think years ago, at some of the schools, there were PBIS teams that were trained. I know that the Webster Middle School has been working all year long with the consultants on PBIS. They have an active team. But the other schools have different bits and pieces. So we're really going to go all the way back, and this is something that we're going to work on, and it will be part of our goals for next year, to go back to what are the expectations? How can we build off of the expectations from each school and establish what those are? We can't just put a system in place with collecting data until we have a firm understanding of what we're expecting kids to do. And I think it's really important to note that some of the work that we have to do isn't just with retraining students. It's about building a culture and communication with staff, and administrators, and parents, and having everybody understand what the expectations are so that there is some consistency and follow-up. And then the tracking system kind of falls into that. We're not going to have a million different forms. We're going to have some systems in place so that we're all talking about the same thing, so that when we talk about data, whether it's at the elementary, or the middle, or the high school, we can take a look at what patterns and trends are happening with validity. So I think we've been pretty honest about where we're at. I think, you know, it's not just the administrator's responsibility to handle behavior. It goes into the classroom, and what is that major and what is that minor? So we're going to go all the way back to kind of retraining and rebuilding that understanding as a team, district-wide, with the goal of getting SWISS into place so that we have that data collection system where we can produce graphs and charts and share that data. And I think building that climate and culture will help us reestablish a deeper understanding of what a safe learning environment is. So I did want to share that with you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Goggin. Can you describe for us what SWISS is and why that would be better for us than what we currently have in place? We have Power School in place right now, is that right?
Yes. So I'm also on the learning curve with the SWISS data. I am attending a PBIS workshop for systems leaders so that I have a better understanding of it. But the way it's been explained to me is that the SWISS data collects all incidents. So Power School, as you saw in the last school committee packet, really collects any incident that you put in, in verbal form. And the SWISS data can disaggregate and then create graphs, which Power School cannot do.
Yeah, that's a good explanation. In Power School, we present, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. The reason we switched to Power School, we used to have a plug-in that was used through Power School, but the states changed how they collected data. So that paused our switch back to Power School. So we were trying to eliminate the double entry of data. We really weren't using SWISS database for a while, I think maybe a few years ago at Park Ave, but it wasn't heavily used throughout the district. It wasn't like a standard. There hasn't really been a standard software that was used to track the behavior until we used this plug-in that we used. And then when the state started collecting the data through CIF, which is the Automatic Collection, so before, we used to manually go in and fill out a report through the state about our discipline. And now it's real-time, just like our student information. They're switching everything that's real-time. So when you're putting in information into the database, it automatically is talking to the state. So they're getting kind of real-time data from us. So that's why we had to change to Power School, because we had to change how we were reporting the data. It wasn't just a manual, one-time-a-year input. So with that, with Power School, there's a real strict flow of how the data has to be entered in. There's log entries, and there's incidents, so it's two separate sections. You can put in as much information as you want.
But you can't get out.
But it's not as user-friendly. It's not as a dashboard that come in and say, I wanted to search on this behavior. You can search by behaviors. You can search, there's a dropdown, but it's just not as user-friendly as SWISS can be. So you can go in, SWISS, you can really drill down to...
Time of day, classroom.
The behaviors. When are we seeing the frequency of these behaviors? Is it in the morning? You can get to that level of detail in the SWISS database. You cannot get to that level of detail that quickly in the Power School database.
And I think one of the things that you just said that really hit the core of something that we really have to address as a district here is that it's standardized, consistent. So if, for example, we only have 10 teachers inputting discipline, is that really a valid picture of what's happening in a school? So what we really need to do is to get everyone to understand that this tracking of data tells us about our school climates, right, and what's going on. And I think SWISS can give us that based on whether it's a teacher's classroom, an individual student. That's my understanding, is we can get very user-friendly graphs.
More detailed, down to the, down to, like I said, the time of day or the frequency of behavior. We're seeing a lot of this. When is it happening?
Right, patterns.
Exactly, which you can't get out of Power School.
So I think we've traditionally used the Power School as a logging system to report to the state. And so we need more than that. And so I think we've gotten to the point as a district leadership team where that even the district leaders are like, we don't care if we have to put it in twice. We need the valid data. So you can't make accurate decisions on what's happening if you don't have the systems data. But you can't just go to that data point and say, okay, we're all now going to move to SWISS, without having that retraining of having everybody standardize expectations, standardize responses, and buy into that everybody owns a piece of this, right? So that's what we're attempting to do. I think it's, you know, keeping and informing our community about where we're at, I think, is important. I think working together as a team, moving forward, is important. And that learning environment certainly impacts how kids can learn in school. And so this is something that goes hand in hand with the curriculum work that we're doing. So that's where we're at, right now, today. And I'll know more after I go to the workshop and after our DLT tomorrow, but we're rewinding. You know, I think years ago, there was some pretty solid PBIS teams at all of the schools, and a lot of people have left. We need to retrain and reset expectations as a district.
Sounds like a huge project, you know?
Yeah, that's us.
How long do you anticipate this taking, to get everybody sort of retrained and onboard?
Oh, I think a while. I mean, this isn't something that's going to be fixed between now and the end of the year. I think that teams have to be established, structures have to be put in place. And, you know, we have to have that clear expectations of what everyone's going to be expected to do. Like I said, we can't just say, oh, all those five teachers do it, but the rest of them don't. And all the administrators are the only ones that use this. That's not going to make the system work, because we're not going to be able to track low-incident behaviors, which are just as important as high-incident behaviors, and we really want to see the whole picture. And they kind of work with us. The consultants that we have are trained experts in this, and they've come in and done this with systems. And, you know, not that it's, not that it takes away from the seriousness of this, because there's nothing more serious than the safety of the kids in school, but they're seeing the same things that we're seeing in other districts. So we're not alone, but I think we're on the right track. So that's an update.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Mott?
What is this program called?
SWISS.
SWISS?
It's part of the PBIS data tracking system. I'll bring more information after I learn more about it. So this won't be the only time you hear about it.
So still using Power School. Are staff going to have to put information in in both places?
No, staff, I don't think so, no.
No.
I think the Power School piece, and that's the things we have to sort out. I think the Power School piece is primarily used to make sure that we are completing the state reporting on state reportable offenses. The high school used it for every incident. So they had the cleanest sheet, as you saw in your last week's packet. So they tracked what was going on. But even in their tracking, for the low incidence, not everybody was using that system. So no system works to give us the true data unless everybody's using it with some sense of fidelity. And that's why I really feel strongly that we have to go back to say, why is this important? Why and what is it that we're expecting? And administrators then have to, you know, retrain staff and hold people accountable, but we want to make it easy, simple, and those are the things that I really don't know about yet, because we're going to listen to the consultants and streamline the forms. We don't need five different forms. We don't, you know, what makes sense? Is it electronic? Is it paper? And is it at the end of the day? You know, like, all of those things, I think we have to figure out.
And since it is a team, I would assume, I hope, that the new resource officer will be trained along with the other staff on PBIS?
Oh, the new resource officer can certainly be trained with us on PBIS, and I think it's important that you know that the resource officer is not responsible for doing discipline.
Right.
So they don't input into Power School here. But you brought up another point that I just want to make clear. Even though every school would have a PBIS team, it's not the team, just like, it has to be everybody, again. Like, I think there's sometimes a tendency in not just, in any organization, right, to say, well, somebody does this, and they're the person who does this. Oh, you're the attendance person. You're the only attendance person. Oh, system principal and dean, you're the discipline person. It can never be just one person. We all have to pitch in. So I think that's where we're trying to lean with this, so.
So, Dr. Goggin, in addition to really using these systems with fidelity, tracking the data, can you describe a little bit, or maybe not yet, how we're using maybe the student handbooks and all of those things? Are we using those with fidelity, or is that something that we also need to work on when it comes to expectations and, you know, consequences? I hate to sound that negative consequences word, but...
It's a great question, and I think this is an opportunity. So, you know, anytime you have something that goes wrong in a school district, you take a look at it and you say, well, how can we fix the problem? I definitely know that the administrators are looking, beginning to look at their handbooks for next year to establish, again, the clear, consistent trajectory, K to 12, of what expectations are, and to put some more clarity in that in the handbook. So I do anticipate that you're going to see some improvements in some of the handbooks and some more consistent language so that we're holding the kids accountable for the same things. And we shouldn't see different expectations when the kids leave the middle school to when they go to high school. Again, developmentally appropriate, you want to give kids more freedoms and more responsibility, but the expectations of behavior of what kids should be doing in school should remain the same. So it is a work in progress, and you will see new handbooks.
Thank you for your updates.
You're welcome. I'm not done.
I know.
And I do want to let you know that we are working with Old Sturbridge Village to initiate a new tradition where a grade level from Park Ave and Webster Middle School will be traveling to Old Sturbridge Village for something called Webster Days. We're trying desperately to get that in before the end of the year, so stay tuned on that. I do want to give some public reminders that tomorrow night, we will be holding yet another informational night on the proposed Bartlett High School renovation project at Park Avenue Elementary School at 6:00 PM. I encourage everyone to take four friends and come and hear more about the wonderful things that are in the future, hopefully, for Bartlett High School. We are also holding a virtual informational night on Thursday, April 28. That is at 6:00 PM. The link for that Zoom link is on our website, and also went out in my newsletter today. And back with a wonderful tradition on Friday night. I'm sorry, Colin, you can say it still, but I do want to add that Empty Bowls is happening at the high school, and part of Empty Bowls, I have awesome high school kids who have volunteered to give tours to our parents and community members of the condition of the Bartlett High School school so they can see for themselves what the school looks like. As a reminder, there is a ballot vote on May 2 for the town with regards to the Bartlett High School proposed project. On May 3, our super team is back in action with an early arrival at 4:30. I did want to note that. A dinner is at 5:30, and speeches are at 6:30. And then May 6, the Bartlett High School Dinner Theater, Murder on the Menu, is at 7:00 PM. And May 9 is the town meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Goggin.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. I am going to skip over one, because Dr. Goggin stole my report. I was going to update you on the dates, so you're aware of them. So I'll jump right over to number two, which is other updates, just a couple of brief updates. We received an additional $32,557 in state aid. It's called FY22: One-Time Assistance for Districts with Pandemic-Related Enrollment Disruptions Impacting Chapter 78. So if you remember, we've seen a decline in our enrollment, which we took a hit in Chapter 70, and then districts saw a jump back in enrollment. So we had lost that enrollment, so they went back and they had, like the state does, I'm sure, a very simple formula in how they figured out they were going to give the money back to the districts to help. But we did receive that one-time payment. There are no restrictions on it. We use it like we use our Chapter 78. So we have received that. And then the only other update I have for you tonight is on our high school boiler. I have been speaking with our contractor, Guardian, who's been here. The parts came in. He came back trying to replace. The boilers have 21 sections, and under each section, there is a nipple where it connects the water through the pipe all the way down. Those parts are obsolete, so we were having parts made. He was hoping he could reconnect that. It is not likely going to happen. So what we can do is Plan B, which is block off that section and just bypass it completely. They typically try to keep all the sections operational, but you don't have to. You can work with a reduced section. So I've had some pictures shown today, and everything is just so corroded. He's got to try and come back on Thursday to sand everything down carefully on one pipe so he can try and get a clean seal to keep it from leaking, to block it off. Other than that, we're looking at a more expensive, a bigger deal of a repair. But he said we can operate without replacing that one section. He told me if he had to rate our boiler on a scale of 1 to 10, we would be a 1. He said, I don't know how much longer you're going to get out of it. So regardless of how things go, I think one of the next, you know, we'll have to see how things go at town meeting, but if not, I think the first, if it doesn't go positively, the first thing on my agenda will be replacing the boiler at the high school, because we're not going to make it another winter. So that concludes my report.
Well, that wasn't very good news, Mrs. Prangeli.
Not the news I wanted to give. I was hopeful.
No, I imagine those boilers are very expensive, large, right? We have two at Bartlett?
We had already lost one of the large one, and we replaced it with a smaller one through a Green Community Grant that we were getting. And so we would need five more of them, of the smaller ones, the entire building. So the smaller one only will do like 15% to 20% of the load, so it was enough to heat a little bit and just get, but by the time you get to the other side of the building, the heat wouldn't carry. So you have one big boiler and one small boiler. The big boiler is what's been down. We would need five smaller ones to replace the other one to heat the entire building.
Thank you for explaining that.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from Mrs. Prangeli? No, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Principal Report. Good evening, Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, everybody. So I have just a few items tonight. Number one, MCAS update for the middle school. As you know, all of our students in all of our grades take the MCAS. All four grades take English and math, and then fifth and eighth grade take science. So we started testing before vacation and will continue right up to the end of May, which is really unfortunate, but it's something we have to do. So we have finished English Language Arts prior to vacation. We have about four students in the entire building, one per grade, that still have to make up the test, and we have Friday to do that. So we're in pretty good shape with English Language Arts and completing, percentage of students completing. We started MCAS Math today with grade five, and they'll continue Session 2 tomorrow, and then they'll get a little... And then they'll get a little break for a couple of weeks while grades six, seven, and eight test the rest of this week and next week. And then we'll start science. And then we have our benchmark testing, eye-ready testing for the whole school as well coming up. So we have a lot of assessments coming up, so. We are working with the student council on trying to make student council at the middle school more community-based, and community-based being the middle school community, but also outreach, rather than just them planning spirit weeks every month. So we want them to become real leaders. And so they've been working on some kindness projects. So one of the things that Assistant Principal Mrs. Bronze has been working with them on is creating a kindness rock garden, which will be out in the front of the school eventually. So they've been doing, working on that with kind sayings and positive messages. And then our Dean of Students, Mrs. Bergeron, has been working with them on, it's called Brighton a Day Cards. And so she's working with Webster Manor, and they are creating cards to give to the residents of the Manor. And at this point, we have over 100 cards, and they're still working on them.
That's awesome.
Very excited. I saw a couple of them today and they're very excited about that. So hopefully it's a little community outreach and sunshine and positivity to people, so. And then I know Dr. Gogan went through the May events, but we have a lot of things coming up in June. So just, I know that parents are concerned about getting back to some normalcy and some events, especially our eighth-grade students who have missed out on some things last couple of years. So I just want to assure everybody, we'll publish these dates soon. Right now, these are tentative dates. We're still working on, like Dr. Gogan said, Old Sturbridge Village. So there are some moving pieces because Old Sturbridge Village only has a couple of dates available that interfere with some of the things we've already planned. But we can work around it, and we will. So just an overview, in May, our seventh-grade team of teachers has come up with a great idea to have a family event. So they are inviting families to a cookout and just a fun social event on May 12th. So that's coming up. And then our band director and our eighth-grade counselor, who is going to be our fifth-grade counselor next year, are going down to Park Ave at the end of May to talk about transition with the kids and give them a little presentation and talk about band and how to do that. And then I will be holding a parent event in June to follow up with their visit. So for fourth-grade parents to come to the middle school and get some information. And then we'll do an open house in August like we did this year as well, so. We've also been fortunate enough to book a program called Dirt. It's put on by John Morello, so you can actually Google johnmorello.com and get some really good information about his program. He's a one-man performer focusing on social-emotional kinds of things. It's geared for sixth to eighth grade, so he'll be coming in. And we're working with Dr. Mackay on where the funding, whether we could utilize ESAR funds or other title money for that. So that's exciting to have that come in. We have our spring concert coming up on June 9th. We have scheduled Step Up Day, so our eighth graders will go to the high school for a few hours, and the fourth graders will come up to the middle school for a few hours. And our middle school students will go visit teachers in the next grade. So that's something that's been, that we've been doing for the last couple of years and I believe prior to that as well, so. We've got Field Day planned. We have a grade eight cookout planned and our grade eight celebration. Hopefully, last year, we held it outside just because of COVID, but I would actually like to continue that. It was really a nice event outside, so I think that we would like to continue that, so. A little bit of what we are working on as the end of the year comes very quickly.
Thank you for your updates, Ms. Peterson. Quick question about Field Day. Have you set dates for that yet?
So we have a tentative date of June 16th, but that is one of the dates that is available for Old Sturbridge Village, so I think we have to move that up a little bit to probably the end of May.
Oh, okay. Is that something you're going to be looking for parent volunteers for?
Probably not. The teachers will run all of that. I have not been fortunate enough to be involved in Field Day yet here because COVID was here last year, so. But it is my understanding the teachers run all the stations.
Okay. It's a good opportunity to get parents around the school if it was something that could be, you know, managed. Any other questions or comments?
I was just going to say, one of the things, because you were here starting in COVID, one of the things that happens at Park Ave is it's, Field Day is this big event and really nice opportunity for parents to take shifts to help out. The teachers run the stations, but to have those extra hands for whether it's water or, you know, someone tripped and needs a Band-Aid or just, you don't want to play right now, come and sit with me kind of thing. It is kind of a nice opportunity to open the doors. I know that, having been a middle school principal, it sometimes is really hard to get parents to come in because the kids go like this to them, you know, don't come. But the parents that do come might be far and few between, so it might be a nice opportunity to consider that. Field Day is fun there. I have seen it, and it's very well organized. But more hands on deck is always something that's, that's to consider. But a great lowdown with things happening.
Definitely stacked up for the rest of the school year. It's going to balance out all the assessments they're taking now, I think.
So I just talked to the eighth-grade team today about, because they're, the fifth and eighth graders are the ones that are heavily tested. So I talked to them about looking at something besides this, maybe even just an hour of whatever, you know, whatever they come up with, so.
Actually, I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but I have a fifth grader that came home today with a really neat thing that her teachers are doing, celebrating each individual student. So I don't know if you've heard about this yet, but, so one student per day during, I think, the month of May will be featured, and people will write kind notes and things about them, and they're inviting parents to write a note describing their student, and they're going to celebrate each individual student in those two classrooms. So that's really amazing stuff right there.
And I do also want to, one of the things I forgot about MCAS is, we kind of dread it, but the data is useful. You know, there's a reason we do it. But I, at the end of every session, for those of you who don't know, we have to collect all of the tickets that the kids use to log into the computer and any scrap paper that they use and discard everything. So I collected all of the paper today, and as I was putting it in the shredding bin, you know, I just happened to glance down because we're not allowed to look through things and see things, but happened to look down and just flipped through because the top paper was so filled with writing and it's just divided into squares. And every paper I've just kind of flipped through had writing on it. So the kids are really taking this seriously and what our staff and teachers are teaching them, the strategies they are bringing it to the assessment piece. So it's nice to see that.
That's great. Any questions or comments from Ms. Peterson? Thank you for your updates. Nice to see you. The next item on the agenda is our update from our student representative. Hey, Colin.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have much. Superintendent Gogan stole some of my items.
You can still talk about it.
I just want to start off again. The Empty Bowls is on Friday. It's a great fundraiser. I highly suggest everyone to attend that. Really make the art department's day. They've spent a lot of time working on it. I know in my yearbook class, we've been helping them a lot. So that would, that would really make their day, see a lot of people there and support. I just want to give a quick sport update. The boys' tennis team is 4-1. They had a nice win yesterday and over break. The girls' tennis team is unfortunately 0-5. They've been dealing with a lot of injuries, which is not good. We hope everyone gets better for them. The boys' baseball team is unfortunately 0-10. The girls' softball team is 3-6. They had a very fun doubleheader over break. And the track team, the girls, are 1-0, and the boys are 0-1 with a meet tomorrow. Hopefully, weather is good on late today. And the varsity tennis teams are also competing in the Swickle Tournament on Friday. The boys will be held at Uxbridge, and the girls will be held here. So if anyone wants to come out and support the Swickle Girls, it'll be right up the hill. Good luck to all of them that are playing. And also, AP tests start next week for students at the high school. I know everybody is dreading those. No one is looking forward to those at all. But that is all I have for tonight. Any questions?
Colin, do you mind to run that date by us again for the Swickle Girls here at Bartlett?
Uh, Friday.
The same night as Empty Bowls?
It's during the day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's all during the day, so it's, no, depend, is, depending how long, it shouldn't be till like later, it's normally. I think we're, we're leaving at 9:00.
Oh, okay.
We don't know what time we're getting back because it's like a play-it-by, you know, situation, like who, if you keep winning, you keep moving on. But it's till, I'm not sure what time, but the next couple of rounds are over the weekend. So it will play into the weekend, too. If people from Bartlett end up winning, they'll play on like Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, great.
So it should be fun. It's fun every year.
Cool. Well, good luck to them. Thanks for your updates.
No problem.
Questions or comments from anyone? No? Thanks again. The next item on the agenda, under Old Business, is a COVID protocols update. Be glad when we can retire that.
Yes.
Old Business.
I just want to give you a quick update. The week ending April 12th, we had one student and three staff members. We, of course, had April vacation, and we're back from April vacation. And the week ending April 26th, we had nine students and six staff members. So we have seen a slight tick up, which we anticipated after the vacation. Hopefully, it will continue to go down.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your update. The next item on the agenda, under New Business, is a discussion and vote on school choice.
Thank you. As you know, the school committee needs to vote annually on school choice, and it is my recommendation that we keep the cutoff date of October 1st that we have established and keep the caps that we have established. Park Ave, 140 students per grade level. Webster Middle School, 150, and Bartlett, 160. As you can see from the chart in your packet, this would not allow school choice at grades three, six, seven, and eight.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. I will entertain a, is it a motion to approve the school choice plan as presented?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of surplus items.
Thank you. In your packet, you should have a letter. We have two items we're looking to surplus. We have 35 projector screens. As you know, over the summer, we've updated or led into the fall, actually, by the time they all came in. But we've replaced all of the screens at the Webster Middle School, installing smartboards on the walls. The screens and projectors are no longer in use, so the screens, many of them are old and original to the building in 2005. So we're looking to dispose of those projector screens. And the second units that we're looking to get rid of are the wardrobe units. Those were the cubbies that were in the classrooms. Those were taken out of all the classrooms due to COVID, but they're keeping half. They'd like to keep half of the fifth and sixth. Those are really meant for more of an elementary age. If you remember, the middle school was originally open to three to six school. So the seventh and eighth graders are not using them. We've installed hooks on the walls in those classrooms for the kids to hang jackets and stuff in there. So we're looking to dispose half of those cupboard units.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. Just curious, what are the seventh and eighth graders doing with their backpacks and stuff? They're putting it all on the hook or?
Right, in the classroom. There's hooks that go along the wall that they can use that were installed instead of having the big cubbies in there.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to declare the surplus items that include 35 Draper Luma projector screens and 34 wardrobe units at Webster Middle School and to direct the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance to auction off, donate, or otherwise recycle or dispose of these materials in conjunction with the provisions of Master General Law 30B.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, could you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers.
Awesome.
Me, too. I have some, and I have some friends going with me on Friday.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.